All right, it's six o'clock on the dot. So I'm going to call the meeting to order as we do have a quorum. And Diane, could you give us the role of who we've got on?
Sure, we have Trish, Chief Jewitt, Larry, Charlie, Pete, Tina, yourself, Terri, Jack, Chief Alcindino, and Nancy.
Awesome, welcome everybody. And hopefully this will be a shorter one as we have our regularly, regular meeting on Tuesday tomorrow, so that'll be a long one. So Trish, if you would please inform us on what you found out.
Sure. Okay, so this weekend, the calls were on the shorter side. They reminded us that the PPE deliveries were scheduled to come in on Saturday. The plan came in and there was no issue. There was also no issue with the protest that was planned at the State House also on Saturday. We had 1,342 persons with COVID in New Hampshire, 513 persons recovered, 38 deaths. They reminded us they're continuing to support New Hampshire vendors who are providing goods and services kind of outside of what they ordinarily produce. And they're monitoring whether or not businesses are looking to hire, which seems to be the case. Health and Human Services said they're continuing to process PPE requests and deploy mobile testing. They're still saying there's a critical shortage of gowns and gloves. The Chiefs Larry and I, we got together today, we put in another order requesting them. We'll see what happens. Military support, successful transportation of the PPEs to the warehouse took place. They also, the Joint Information Command said the social media trends. Do you need to check who that was Diane?
No, it's Lisa, we're good.
Okay. So the JEC said a vocal minority wants businesses to open ASAP. However, the majority of the social media wants businesses open slowly and in phases. Logistics, it said for us to keep reviewing our mission tasks, which is why all the Chiefs and Larry and I talked about what we needed. And once we actually get our orders, we can close them out. And they just reminded us to do that. They also said that Civil Air Patrol will be conducting flights to provide situational awareness related to traffic congestion on popular roadways. And now they're also scouring over parks and beaches because as people are getting more bored, they're going out. First responders, 17 first responders have tested positive. Fifty-four responders are in quarantine and 14 are staying in alternative lodging. They also said they directed the New Hampshire Sea Coast Patrol to monitor traffic. And again, was trying to enforce parking restrictions along the roadways and according near all the beaches and reminding that the beach closures are still in place. The next call was 1,332 positive, which was up 50 from the day before. Five twenty-one recovered, which was up eight from the day before. Forty-one deaths, unfortunately that was up three from the day before. A hundred and ninety-eight hospitalizations, seventy-nine current, and 12,700 negative. They also said Department of Health said they're continuing to try to buy PPEs. As much as you hear things on the news, everybody's got everything, you know, those in the trenches know differently. The mobile unit for testing is remaining on the road. And today they were actually going to two sites. Unfortunately, both of them were nursing home sites to try to monitor what was going on there. They're working on a new web EOC notification system. Just because there's so much going on, the head state web EOC is having trouble keeping track a little bit of when a task has been completed or not. The goal is when they complete our orders that we're giving them or the mission tasks that we're sending them, that they should say they've completed it. Instead, that's not happening. So we have to keep looking at it to then close it out. They're also continuing to coordinate efforts again with the PPE shipments and looking for security. They also told us that Manchester-Boston Regional Airport have flights now into and out of Manchester. And they are going to Charlotte, Chicago, Detroit, Phoenix, Baltimore, Houston, and Orlando with connections to other destinations. They said Portsmouth has canceled flights in and out of Portsmouth. Lebanon said Cape Air has only been sporting flights from Lebanon to Boston since March 28th. As far as our first responders, we had 17 positive first responders, 42 in quarantine, 15 in alternative lodging, and 15 are, sorry, 15 in alternative lodging. Sorry, I was repeating myself. They also said that this afternoon there might be a rally and it's being monitored. They're working, supposedly this is to protect civil liberties of citizens that want to exercise their rights to freedom. They also said continuing to escort and provide security for the regional PPE distribution throughout the state, again, seems to be an issue. Administration and Finance had nothing to report. They also said they're able to assist with anything related to public relations and media. There's conversations on the social media as of today about unemployment and discussion around whether or not to reopen the economy. The Safety and Wellness says the team will remain busy and they're working on some other sites and new advisories will come out later on this week. The next call was, they said as of yesterday, well, I repeated that, 1,093, 92 cases, five twenty-one persons recovered, 41 deaths. They're doing virtual applicant registrations and that's going to be released later this week for communities, for nonprofits, schools, town agencies, et cetera. They also talked about, there was a question on N95 masks versus the KN95 masks. And they explained that the KN designation is about the regulation according to China's regulations. They do meet some standards, but they are not tested by OSHA here in the United States. And their recommendation is that a KN95, if it has to be used, it should not be used in the same way your N95 masks. They're saying that if you have, consider the KN95 as like a surgical mask. They don't give us the protection that the N95s do. They also said they altered their staffing model. This is a question rather, from a fire department. "We altered our staffing model. Would it be your recommendation to continue to staff for a surge or should we return to normal operations?" The answer was statewide, there has been a lot of EMS services that have seen a decline in calls. But unfortunately, the calls that they're going on are typically more serious and the decontamination procedure is longer, especially if it was a COVID call. They said they were told that if you have people on overtime or additional staff that you've brought in because of COVID, the 75% reimbursement will apply. Standby status, unless they're responding to a call like we've had in previous disasters, we would have to prove or submit documentation showing how many calls they went on when they were on call. So if we, like in previous disasters, if we called people in because it was weather-related and we needed, we were delivering water or rations or whatever, we would have to explain all those calls and who went and what vehicle they used. So that's what that is referring to. They said obviously, if we begin to see a change in the state, when things open back up, then we'll see a difference in the call volume and it could be a dramatic increase. They also said, an ambulance service said that they had some N95 masks that are beyond their expiration date. He actually said they expired in 2003. He said, "We've heard from CDC that they still will perform at an acceptable level, but should we use these or should we go to some KN95?" And they answer was, they would definitely use the expired masks first because CD recommends them even beyond their expiration date. And they may be able to supply that particular town with more PPEs. So try not to rely on the KN95s. We also had questions, somebody said, "Can we list questions and thoughts about as different towns open up that are problematic in some areas that tend to, you know, attract people like Motor Speedway?" They're asking, "Should we start submitting our questions now as to how we would handle certain things?" And they did say, "Yes, if we have questions, we should put it in our EOC and they will work with us on getting answers." Code Enforcement Health Officer said, "When the state parks open, do we know how the virus survives in small bodies of water, ponds and lakes?" They're concerned about, should we open the beaches or not? And the answer was, "We will get back to you." There was another fire department that said ATV trails are scheduled to open in May. Will we delay them opening or will it stay the same? And the answer said, was, "We have not yet addressed that issue, although the stay-at-home order is in effect until May 4th." That fire chief said, "We understand that, but the problem is once the ATVs start, it takes their first responders away and into trails to do rescue missions and transport missions." So they're concerned that that's going to, you know, take too many first responders away from what they should have. And then another person, an EMD actually, asked, "Could we get unemployment numbers by town so we can figure out how to plan with regard to food banks?" If we've got a lot of people in our town that are unemployed and unemployment isn't coming in, they may be embarrassed to reach out and maybe it would help us to know. And the answer is, "We will reach out to Employment Security and see if they can create that kind of a list for you." And then the last thing that we got were unfortunately, on a sad note, documents from the state medical examiner regarding policies for the chain of custody for bodies, chain of custody for personal belongings of the deceased, and a spreadsheet of the funeral homes throughout the state that are equipped for either storage or cremation. And then the only other thing we got is, you probably heard earlier in the week, people asked a question and they said, "We'll get back to you." So they responded to something that was asked on the 15th. And it was about emergency order 17A when they talked about farmers markets. You might remember me sharing that. So here's their answer, or the question first and then the answer. It said, under page two on farmer's market on order 17A, "Workers supporting groceries, pharmacies, florists and other retail, including farmers markets and farm stands, sell food and beverage products, including liquor stores, can stay open." The response to that was, so a farmer's market is allowed as an essential business, but it is limited to food, flowers and plants. Nurseries are also considered an essential business that can stay open. They went on to talk about farmer's market and said they need to have a protocol and a plan in place to, and other guidance, limiting groups to less than 10. So they would need to limit customers at any one stall, say in the farmer's market. They have to deal with social distancing by spacing vendors far enough apart and then possibly requiring the vendors to wear masks and gloves. Said even if they normally would have vendors that sell non-food items like arts and crafts, that would not be allowed at this time. It's only for the food, plants and beverages. And that covers everything.
All right, thank you. The, as I think I said in the last meeting, the key thing to pay attention there is the numbers. And, you know, the governor has said, as they're all saying, he's looking for precipitous drop in new COVID cases over a 14-day period before he'll consider moving to Phase One of the guidelines.
Right.
So unfortunately, we went up, right? So we didn't go up much, so there's a little silver lining.
Right.
Got a couple of COVID-related things on the agenda. The first one I wanted to cover was, we've talked about this before and I'll let Diane kind of share the timeline, but this is the life safety issues at Town Hall and Library that Diane has laid up, lined up a vendor to take care of, hopefully on a day where there is no cross, you know, wouldn't be crossing with any of our currently working employees in the Town Hall. There's nobody working in the library and we would clean up later. So Diane, do you have dates around that that you're proposing?
Yes, I do. I'm hoping to go this Friday. That would be April 24th to have the sprinklers heads removed and all that taken care of and the smoke detectors, I mean, the heat detectors changed to smoke detectors where necessary in both the Town Hall and Library. And then on Monday, I will schedule the cleaning crew to come in to clean both those buildings. And that's what I kind of need a motion on to pay those. So the one for the Town Hall is $636.61 and the Library is $451.89.
Okay, so before we do that, so if they're coming in to clean on Monday, have we heard from Kim and Mary Jo that they would not be present?
That's correct. But I did talk to them and I told them that the, what they're doing here for the cleaning is environmentally friendly and they can come in after, 15 minutes after they clean.
Okay, so I'm just thinking if they're doing a normal workday, when would the cleaners come in?
I'm hoping to get them in around eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay. So we would, we would be able to, have we verified that Mary Jo and Kim would be able to, you know, work from home or just come in later and get their stuff done? Have you talked to them at all about that?
Yeah, I have talked to them. And I believe Kim is working on getting herself set up remotely and Mary Jo can already do that.
All right, so basically it's two questions for the board. One is a matter of concept, are you okay with us doing this? And two is, do you approve the, because we already approved the work, do you approve the investment in the cleaning, which, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's a thousand dollars to clean both buildings. So what's the board's thoughts on this?
Yes, to do it. And can't we potentially get reimbursed for the cleaning?
It's always potentially, but.
Yeah, hopefully, okay.
Yep, another call.
Yeah, we would just want to make sure that we track it as a COVID-19 expense so that it can be submitted.
Well, they might say that you guys scheduled regular work to be done and so you're getting the building cleaned, so those two invoices might not get paid.
Here's the way I look at it, is there are, basically, it's a guessing game for any of this reimbursement, that we get any of it. If you were going to graft these according to the ones we have the least shot of getting, this is probably one of them. But it's life safety stuff that had to be done. This is not going to be the last time we clean. We're going to clean a few times, I think, through this whole thing, so, you know.
After this, there's, I mean, we don't really need any more work done until this is over, hopefully.
As we sit here today, I think that's probably true.
As we sit here today, so we can only hope that we don't need lots of thousand-dollar cleanings if we do this correctly moving forward after this.
Yeah.
I mean, the only reason we're doing this is because the chief advises it.
It's the building inspector advises it.
Him too, yes, thank you.
All right, so, you know, so conceptually, everybody's okay with this because we did have the two workers there, both of them expressed concerns about why we're doing this. And so the board is okay with the fact that we're taking, first of all, the work's being done by the person on a day when nobody's there and the cleanup is doing, being done before they come back in. So we're okay with that?
I'm okay, Larry.
If you want a motion, I'll give a motion to clean both buildings.
Okay. And Diane, what was the total cost?
The total cost is $1,088.50.
I'd still say $1,100.
Yeah. Okay, so Charlie made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
Okay, Larry Beecher. So let's go around, Lisa?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And I'm an "I," so that's unanimous.
Okay.
So thank you. And yeah, just Diane goes without saying, maybe first phone call is to Mary Jo and Kim so they can plan accordingly.
Yeah, I'll send them my email right after this.
Thank you. And I believe the Chief Jewitt is interested in having Armon come in to install new PCs. So this would mean a couple of techs for two days in the PD. We have a limited, limited group of people coming through the PD anyway, although they do have some degree of, I guess what I'm saying is, this concerns me a lot less because we do have some traffic through the PD. So is everybody okay with having techs come in to do work at the PD for a couple of days?
I don't have a problem with it.
I imagine the techs are taking the appropriate precautions as they come in, so.
And this is something that needs to be done now? I mean, it's an urgent matter for them?
Yes, he's done.
Yeah, I can jump in. So this was supposed to be scheduled right prior to COVID happening. They were, we had purchased the computers back then and we held off on putting them in. The problem that I'm having now is I've got a few computers that are down and now my office is a sharing computers, which I had sent out a memo asking them not to do that just because I don't want anyone, you know, as long as everyone wipes their computer down, but I'm not 100% positive that they've done that. So by allowing the techs to come in for two days, I mean, we're cleaning the PD every couple hours anyway, we're wiping it down. I'm hoping that if, that would keep people off of each other's computers, we're not sharing them, just, you know, that we're there, it's less of a contact. So that was, that's where I am with this now, is I'm hoping that, you know, this would eliminate them having to share computers. And they've been sitting, we paid for them probably two months ago and they'd been sitting waiting for a safe time to come in, but that's what I want to ask the board if they had any issue with them coming in.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So I agree that it's important to discourage the sharing of computers as that does allow for transfer, no matter how good we think we're doing with our cleaning. So I think having them come in and put in to replace the computers is a smart move.
All right. I don't, I don't think we need a motion here. I think you're hearing, Chief, that the board, we're hearing from most of the board anyway that they're okay with it. So I think we're good to go on that one. To Lisa's point, just double check with Armon that they're taking the necessary precautions. Like any business right now, they'd be silly if they were not doing so. So just verify with them. But I think that's, that one's good to schedule.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt?
All right.
Of course, I'm sure the chief has the supply of gloves and masks, so if they show up without them, he can hand them to them and say, "Put them on before you come in."
Take them off the bill. I think Nancy had something.
Yeah, I have one quick question. I normally go in on Friday to check the mail and do the deposit. Can I go in over the weekend instead or is the building not safe to be in?
I wouldn't say it's not safe to be in, but if you could do it prior to Friday, I think that would be a good thing.
Well, the problem is, is the other two girls are there and you don't want me there when they're there.
So what time are they not there? Are they, both done by five?
I think six usually, but I don't know. I haven't talked to Kim about working remotely, so I don't know.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the answer is, and somebody jump in here if you don't agree with me, but I guess the answer is to, once they've done the work on Friday, I think the, the sort of, I wouldn't say that it's unsafe, but the likelihood of exposure is increased on Friday and it's, it's lessened, severely lessened on Monday after the cleaning. So that window there over the weekend is probably not a good window.
Okay.
So if you can find another window during the week, I would call Kim and Mary Jo, then that might be better.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks. We do have minutes from April 15th, just public. I don't know if somebody wants to approve those.
I do approve the public minutes from April. What was the date again? What year is this?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay, fifteen.
Twenty twenty. So that was Kate. Can we get a second?
Second.
And I second.
Okay, Charlie, one. Let's go around the horn, Larry?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Matt's an "I," so that's unanimous, thank you. All right, anything else COVID-related for this meeting?
This is Diane. Just so, just so you know, on Friday, they'll be working inside the two buildings, so I will be in there Friday and I will work Friday in the office instead of Thursday here at my office, my home office.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows, that's where I'll be on Friday.
Okay, wear that gear.
Matt, I have one other thing.
Trish?
Yep, so this is just a suggestion. I know that you are all extremely excited every Monday, Wednesday and Friday to get on this call. But on a state level, because they, they've already cut down on legal calls, so we only have one a week, which is going to be on Tuesday, I'm wondering if, is it necessary to do the Friday call? If something shattering came up on Thursday and Friday, I could reach out to you, Matt, and you could decide if we needed to do something, but otherwise, I think it could probably wait till Monday.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. So if we, if Trish knows better than anybody else, Diane, what our, you know, our posting rule is? So if we take Friday off the schedule, Trish will make sure she gets to us if we need to post to do something on Friday that cannot wait until Monday. But I don't, I'm not even going to take a motion on this one because I'm sure everybody is okay with it.
In agreement.
But, so that, so everybody take Friday off, go to the movies, go to the fair, go to the shopping mall.
And go to the beach.
Go to the beach. Go camping, camping you can do.
Right.
All right, so thank you, Trish. That'll, that'll, that is going to go over in my household, I can tell you that much.
Good, good.
All right, anything else for this meeting?
Excuse me, yes, this is Terri.
Terri?
I have a question regarding, is it possible if I could go to the library Thursday? I need to pick up mail and I usually check on the building and work on payroll, but if it's something where Diane will be going Friday, would you rather that I don't?
So I think Diane, Thursday would work, right?
Yeah. Yep, that's fine by me.
Okay.
Awesome.
And thank you Diane for going on Friday and Monday.
All right. Okay, so if we want to wrap this one up, we're all back together tomorrow night, so we won't be lonely for too long. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, so Charlie moved, Lisa second. I'm not taking a motion because I'm sure we're all a yes, so.
Yep.
All right, so thanks everybody, have a good evening and we'll talk soon.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Have a good night.